And now I'd like to call to order the April 3rd, 2019 meeting of the Phoenix City Council. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilman DeCecio.
Here.
Councilwoman Guevara.
Here.
Councilwoman Mendoza.
Here.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams. Vice Mayor Waring.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
Thank you, it is certainly wonderful to be back and I look forward to working with all of you. And now will today's interpreter, Mario Barajas, please introduce yourself for the audience.
Thank you Mayor. Good afternoon, my name is Mario Barajas, I'm going to be serving as today's Spanish interpreter and I'm going to be making a brief announcement in Spanish. Buenas tardes a todos, mi nombre es Mario Barajas, yo voy a estar sirviendo como el intérprete de español. Si acaso alguien necesita el servicio de intérprete de español, por favor de acudir hacia atrás a cualquier miembro personal de la ciudad y les pueden proveer los aparatos para escuchar la traducción en español, gracias. Thank you Mayor.
Will the City Clerk please read the 24 hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinances and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordnances number G6572 through 6580, S45422, 45493 through 45533, 45535 through 45538, and resolutions 21725 through 21734.
Thank you. Because of the possibility of losing a quorum before today's business has been conducted, I'd like to suspend the rules and change the order of business so that citizen comments are heard at the end of today's agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move the citizens' comments to the end of the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
Voice vote, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All against?
No.
Motion passes.
Mayor, also there are individuals that have cases in front of the city today, they may be still in line outside, can we make sure that they get in?
I think that is an excellent.
Have we done that already? Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, because I ran into a couple of people outside, they were waiting and they couldn't get in and they have a case coming up.
Perfect, we'll make sure everyone who has official business. Councilmember Guevara, have you had a chance to review the meeting minutes from December 5th?
Yes Mayor, I have, I moved approval of the minutes of the December 5th formal meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All against? Motion passes. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on boards and commissions nominations?
Moved to approve the mayor's. Moved to approve mayor and city council board and commission nominations.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have one individual to be sworn in today. Raise your right hand and please repeat after me. I.
Aye.
State your name.
Darren Wonderley.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of.
The police pension board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Moved to approve items 3 through 20, except item 20.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 20 is in Councilwoman Mendoza's district, Councilwoman, do you have a motion?
I do Mayor, do we have a card?
We have one card from the applicant, marked in favor.
Okay.
We would like to hear from the applicant before the Councilwoman makes an motion, if Mr. Coeur could come down to the podium and testify.
Are we downstairs?
Would you mind joining us at the podium? Thank you, and you have two minutes to tell us about your application and address any community concerns.
I have a beer and wine license, trying to get a beer and wine license, I've been in the business for about a year right now and I've never had any problems, you know, the place is, no problems, in the area, everything is great, so I don't know what others' concerns. I think there is a gentleman who owns a liquor store nearby, he put a complaint and I don't know, we have no problems at all, like I said, the place is in great shape and we make sure everything is intact. And I think there is a complaint about the U-Haul license, so he's saying we're not licensed. Definitely, I'm not licensed to rental, it's U-Haul who are licensed. U-Haul, I just work for them, I don't have a license to rent. U-Haul has a license, which I assume they do. That's what I assume he said and if he's talking about a previous owner, if he had problems, I don't know, but like I said, I had the place for, April 6th will be one year and no problems at all, so that's why I'm trying to get, to improve my business, you know, I want to help my family, that's all I do, so I want to see if any problem to be approved.
Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions for the applicant, however, I have received phone calls and emails about the area and how the community is trying to clean up the area because it is a challenged area, so I, you know, there's many things that are going on in the neighborhood and so the community has been working for years now to enhance the community and make it a safer community and so at this moment, I have to move to disapprove the liquor application and it's based on the concerns with the location in the neighborhood. There are sufficient liquor licenses already in the area and in fact, there's Tower Liquors, that's approximately 200 feet from this liquor store, and also Valley Hospital, which is an inpatient hospital that treats alcoholic and drug addicts, is less than one-fourth of a mile in the neighborhood behind your store. There's also a high rate of pedestrian traffic injuries and fatalities and another liquor license here will just have a negative impact on the area. Regarding the protests, we received a petition with over 50 signatures from concerned neighbors protesting the license, they've expressed they do not need another store selling alcohol and are concerned about adding liquor to an already challenged neighborhood. So this is the reason why I am moving to disapprove your license. I do want you to know that we are a recommending body and that the state has the last say in your application, so that's, thank you.
Wonderful.
And a motion to disapprove the liquor license.
Second.
We have a motion to disapprove based on neighborhood concerns and the prevalence of liquor in the neighborhood, and a second. Any additional questions? Roll call. DeCecio.
Yes.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego. Yes. The motion passes unanimously, thank you. City Clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business, and planning and zoning? All right, Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
We do. Motion to approve items 21 through 108, except the following: 31, 32, 33, 35, 42, 52, 54, 57, 59, 67, 78, 83, 98, 103, 104, 105, 106, and 108. Items 29, 75, 77, and 107 are being continued to April 17th, 2019, and item 101 has been withdrawn. Now say it three times fast.
Very impressive.
Do we have a second?
Second. Second. Did item 29?
Okay, thank you.
I didn't hear it.
Perfect. All right, clarifying that item 29 is among those being continued, roll call. DeCecio.
Yes.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego. Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Item 30. Oh, no, item 31, yes. Fabulous. Item 31 is our MOU between the City of Phoenix and Launa, can we have a brief staff report from our HR Director?
Good afternoon Mayor, members of the council. The purpose of today's item is for the council to have an opportunity to hear public comment on the proposed contract between Launa Local 777 and the City of Phoenix. With me today is David Matthews, Deputy HR Director and Chief Negotiator with Launa. And as you know, we have been in negotiations since early January and we are pleased to say that through a collaborative approach, we have reached an agreement with Launa Local 777. In your packets, you have the proposed MOU, the memorandum of understanding with the new language identified in bold font, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Wonderful, thank you for your work on this and congratulations on meeting an agreement. We welcome Jennifer Grundall from Launa and congratulations on your work on this agreement and working to make sure that our city employees have fair compensation.
I didn't know it would be so quickly, I apologize, so I was still taking notes, which I'm going to read. So my name is Jennifer Grundall, I work for Launa Local 777, we represent the employees in Unit 1. I normally speak really quickly, so you have no idea what I'm saying, so I'm going to try to slow down a little bit. First, I want to thank you for an item that you just passed on the agenda, which was dear to us and we worked very hard at $15 an hour for full-time employees in the city of Phoenix. And that's going to change people's lives, which, you know, I get really emotional, so I won't go into that, but we are very grateful, so thank you for that. In terms of our contract, I have been doing this 25 years at this point in many states and obviously I've been with you since 2009. This has been the most collaborative contract that we have gone through. We sat at the table, and I did cuss probably like 10 times, so that happened, but at the same time, we brainstormed about ideas. We talked about procedures and policies and how they're applied, how they're misapplied in the field. We brought people in from the field that were employees and supervisors and foremen and we came to an actual agreement on how things would work and we know how they're going to work in the field because we talked it out at the table. It was actually fun for me to be at bargaining and as most of you know, I hate this, this is not what I like to do, is negotiate, but we came up with some really innovative ideas that we've not had in any contract in any state I've worked in, which has been 15 states in this country. It is fantastic, I can't wait to see them to actually be applied in the field and of course, I think they deserve more money, of course I do. I think everyone I represent deserves more money, but this is the first contract since the Great Recession where we have solid pay increases and outside of maybe three people in our entire bargaining unit, they are thrilled with this agreement, they're actually excited and I haven't seen them happy. I've been dealing with concessions over and over and over again and trying to explain to them that this is our share and this is what we do to stand up, to help the community. Now, they feel as if, look, we're going to have community services, they're going to come back because of the proposed budget and we're also going to get a pay increase for the first time. So I just want to say thank you for this and that I hope that this vote goes well, keep my fingers crossed, in the end, when I appreciate your time.
Wonderful, thank you for your hard work on that. And I will open the public hearing. This is an exciting day for us and this contract does mean, and the vote we just took on item 30 means that all full-time city employees will have a $15 minimum wage, so for our laborers covered in this contract as well as solid waste workers, people will be making $15 an hour for full-time work and be able to support their families, so I think this reflects well on our city. Do we have any council member comments? Councilwoman Pastor.
I just want to congratulate Launa for coming to an agreement, obviously the most important, well, there's several most important pieces, but one of it is moving our pay up to $15 to have a livable wage and that they were the first ones in, so thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make some comments. Councilwoman Stark and then Councilwoman Guevara.
Thank you Mayor, I just want to say congratulations to our hard-working staff. We are very blessed at the City of Phoenix to have the staff we have and I'm happy to see that everyone's going to now get paid at least $15 an hour, but I do want to thank Unit 1 for coming up to, step up to the plate and start working with us. Congratulations, you guys deserved the raise.
I'm also very, sorry, thank you Mayor, I'm also very happy about this, at a time when our state legislature is trying to roll back voter-approved minimum wage increases. For some people, it's really great to see Phoenix lead by example. In order to deliver the best for our residents, we have to attract the best employees and this will only continue to help us do so. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Nowakowski.
Thank you Mayor. Mayor, you know, for the 153 workers that are going to be full-time workers that are going to get $15 an hour, it's going to make a big difference. A big difference for their families, making sure that they have a living wage, making sure that they're able to take their kids on vacations and trips like that. I just really want to thank our employees, especially Unit 1, for the sacrifices that you all have made. I was here when we had to make those budget cuts and it was a hard decision. And one of the things I felt very, very proud of is that the unions, our employees, they all stood, they stood up to the table and said, you know what, we're willing, we're willing to take our cut as long as these services are provided to our community. We were looking at cutting senior centers, we were looking at cutting youth programs and all kinds of different programs, but we weren't able, we were able to cut them, but not just the hours alone, not the programs itself, and now this year, it looks like we're bringing back all these library hours again, especially on Sundays, and we're able to bring back a lot of those programs that we had to make these hard decisions to either eliminate or to cut down the hours and stuff and once again, I'm so proud of our employees for stepping up and allowing us to operate this city and making sure that all of our citizens have the amenities that they have today, so gracias and thank you all.
Thank you. So, and congratulations to our HR Department on this wonderful. Seeing no further comments, roll call. Oh, close the public hearing. Okay, and then.
Motion to approve item 32. Second.
Roll call.
Okay, got it.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Gallego. Yes, motion passes 6-2.
I'd like to move item 33. Second.
Any council member comments? Roll call. DeCecio.
Yes.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego. Yes. Item passes unanimously. Item 35, trog charge rates, City Clerk.
Should I, yes.
Councilman Waring. Councilman Waring votes against item 33, it passes 7 to 1. Is that appropriate?
Next one. I'm voting no, it's my bad.
Do we need to reconsider or? All right, passes 7 to 1. Item 35.
Moved to approve item 35.
Second.
City Clerk, will you please read the title?
Item 35 is for ordinance G6573 and ordinance amending Phoenix City Code Section 28-39A4 pertaining to sewer user billing charges for the Subregional Operating Group, SROG, member cities and providing for an effective date of July 1st, 2019.
42.
Wonderful, thank, we have a motion and a second, roll call. 35. DeCecio.
Yes.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego. Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Item 42, Councilwoman Pastor, do you have any comments?
Yes, I would like some clarity on item 42. My understanding is that item 42 is just the vendor who works then with the policy groups regarding the compensation plan and everything else that goes along with it.
Yes, so Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, the contract in question here is for the highest group, this is the consultant that works with the Deferred Compensation and PEP, the Post-Employed Health Plan Board, to advise on investment decisions and this is the contractor that we've been working with, the board has been working with for several years and this is a request to approve a new three-year contract with the highest group.
Okay, and it's been brought to my attention that the contract term should be starting April 3rd instead of March 1st. So could we, I move this item with those changes.
Councilwoman moves it as corrected, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call. DeCecio.
Yes.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego. Yes, passes unanimously. Item 52, Sky Harbor, Terminal 3, North Bridge.
So I would like to move, I would like to move item 52 and item 67 and put it together.
Perfect.
They're individ-
I'm okay with 67.
You're okay with it? So then just, okay, 52. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any council member comments? Roll call. DeCecio.
Yes.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Gallego. Yes. Item passes 6-2. Items 54 and 67.
I would like to move item 54. Second.
Are we moving 54 and 67 together?
No.
Okay, item is 54. Any comments on 54? Roll call. DeCecio.
Yes.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Gallego. Yes. Item 57, educational facility revenue bonds.
Moved to approve item 57.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we have one card from Leonard Clark.
Hello, Phoenix City Council and our new mayor. My name's Leonard Clark, citizen of Phoenix, born right down the street at formerly Good Samaritan Hospital, now Banner Health. I like the old name, so maybe they'll change it back for me. Anyways, now, you know, I all know that conscientiously you believe in how you're voting, I just have to tell you though, as a matter of conscience, now, while I believe in school choice, I also believe in parental choice and due to all of the controversies that have been occurring, we've seen at the state legislature with certain individuals allegedly collecting tens of millions of dollars from selling off their corporate charter school assets, the weak bill that was placed through at the state legislature that many people opposed, I just could not, in good conscience as a citizen of Phoenix, want in my name, our Phoenix Industrial Development Authority with your approval, to hand out $13 million in sweet, tax-free municipal dollars to these two corporate charter schools. Because I have to say to you, many parents and people who, in our public schools, our beautiful public schools, we must go out and knock on tens of thousands of doors to get the same thing that they're going to come here and standing in front of you that they, that they're going to get. We have to go do that and hopefully, we pray, but the hundreds of thousands or thousands of people in our community will vote yes on that and they just have to ask nine of you to do that. It's just really not fair, essentially, corporate charter schools, if they had parental elected school boards instead of corporate boards, whose bottom line is a profit, whether they call themselves not-for-profit or not, with their straw management companies, our public schools need the support right now and as much as I love our teachers, our educators, and our children, and the corporate charter schools, the parents deserve a right not to have to go before a corporate charter school board, okay, which is what they'll get if they get the corporate charter school as opposed to a public school. So, I ask you, I know that all of you will vote unanimously on this, you know that I'm always talking about this, I mean, if you do say you are a booster of public education, then please vote no on this and thank you for letting me talk and thank you to the new mayor, thank you.
Any council member comments? Roll call. DeCecio.
Yes.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego. Yes. Item passes unanimously.
Moved to approve item 59.
Second.
We have one card, also from Leonard Clark, marked neutral. Would you, same comments as previous? Oh no, no, I'm sorry, item 59.
Another corporate charter school, yes, same comments, thank you, sorry about that.
This is Homeland Security.
This is Homeland Security. Well, look, while I want better communications, I just, I came up to thank you, I'm neutral on it, but I wanted to thank you because I did not know that our federal government has a Homeland Security listening station. I know it's about communications, but we all know in a post-patriarch world that they do spy on American citizens, so anyways, thank you for bringing that to the knowledge of the City of Phoenix residents. I'm all for good communication to protect us from our enemies, but let's make sure that Homeland Security knows that the people are not the enemy, thank you.
Thank you. Roll call. DeCecio.
Yes.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego. Yes. Item passes unanimously. Item 67, vehicles.
I'd like to move item 67. Second.
Any council member comments? Roll call. DeCecio.
Yes.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Gallego. Yes, item passes 7-1.
Moved to approve item 78.
Second.
Item seventy-eight, we have one card, also from Leonard Clark. West Anthem Water and Waste Water.
Thank you, I just wanted to speak out of concern, as a citizen of North Phoenix, about the tax water rate increase. We've already had, or going to be having, these tax increases on our water. I am just concerned, I want to make sure, I know you have to plan for the future water infrastructure of North Phoenix, Berry Gold Water High School, Sandra Day O'Connor, there's a huge swath of land out there. I don't want it so that we're doing this just because the developers who want to build more cookie-cut houses in the north of Phoenix by Lake Pleasant, in this day and age when we're facing global climate change, people are coming from Honduras, trying to survive because their crops are failing, that we're giving a huge tax increase so that developers can build all these houses. While you're telling us it's to fix the old water infrastructure, but yet, it seems to be helping our developer friends in North Phoenix. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Nowakowski? Pastore?
Yes.
Stark? Waring?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes. Item passes unanimously. Item eighty-three.
On item eighty-three, can I ask a quick question of staff?
Yes, council member, or vice mayor?
I think it's probably Karen.
Karen, on item eighty-three, this is a simple sale of the property?
I'm sorry, I apologize. Mayor, Vice Mayor, what was the question?
This is a simple sale on item eighty-three?
So, item eighty-three has to do with a lift station that is being constructed. It's smaller than one MGD. Normally, we don't accept lift stations of that size. So in these circumstances, we ask for a contribution of three hundred thousand dollars upfront that covers the operations and maintenance of the lift station for a period of time as a condition of accepting the lift station from the developer.
All right, thank you very much. Moved to approve item eighty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Leonard Clark.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm going to stay neutral on this. If I, I'm just highly concerned about the three hundred thousand dollars. I want to make sure that the city's getting all of the full value that it can, and of course, we're all highly concerned now about spot water shortages, we hear talk of that in North Phoenix. Just concerned about another developer taking more water away. How much farther can we grow? Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastore?
Yes.
Stark? Waring? Gallego?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Item ninety-eight. Item ninety-eight is a case in Councilman DeCecio's district. We have one card from the applicant and one card marked opposed. How would you like to proceed, Councilman?
I'd like to hear the opposition first, if I could, Mayor.
Wonderful. Jane McEwen, could you please come forward?
My name is Jane McEwen. I live at 3164 East Amber Ridgeway, and I'm here to oppose the zoning change from C1 to C2 due to the following concerns. The change would be within thirty feet of my home. There's an entry-exit gate, there's an entry-exit driveway to the mall area, and there's an entry-exit way to Thirty-second Street, and traffic is quite a concern unless something is done to possibly create a one-way situation or whatever could be done. And it's also been suggested that a high-end restaurant might occupy that space, and I live right on the other side of the wall, and my husband and I are concerned about late evening noise and possible problems with trash collection, which we've had in the past with the dumpsters overflowing and rodents on the walls and that sort of thing. So, it is a concern for us, and I feel that the businesses can be adequate with the C1 zoning that's currently in place. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have a card from the applicant, Kathy Sponsel.
Mayor and council, I'm Kathy Sponsel. I reside at 927 West Glen Rosa Avenue, Phoenix, Arizona 85013. We're at the corner that's a T-intersection right now on Thirty-second Street. The new Loop 202 will have an exit off of Thirty-second Street, so we're seeing this maybe as an opportunity for this corner. The two parcels we're requesting rezoning for, one's a strip mall and one's a freestanding building about five thousand square feet. So the freestanding building owner is preparing for ownership transition, and with the strip mall, we only have a fifty percent occupancy, so it's struggling right now. So, we're trying to get creative. And so, one of the possibilities we're looking into is, could our martial arts studio that's in the freestanding building move to the strip mall and maybe bring in attractive business to that freestanding building? Because we're at a major intersection, and just across Thirty-second Street at the other corner, it is Zone C2, so we think this is an appropriate request.
Wonderful, thank you, Councilman DeCecio.
Thank you, Mayor. My motion is to approve the zoning on this case. This passed the Village unanimously, Planning Commission unanimously. The concerns were heard at the Village, and primarily, the concerns about the shared use in the driveway, there's just no way you can get around that, that's what it is. It's just mostly an entryway in, so it shouldn't be that problematic at all. The center has had problems in the past, in the sense of, you know, filling its tendencies. It's definitely a proper use there as a C2, it's not unusual, and there's a good chance that this place will end up having a nice high-end restaurant, which that area needs. It's a revitalization move more than it is anything else right now, Mayor. So my motion is to approve.
Wonderful, do we have a second?
Second, and do we need to adopt the related ordinance with that?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, yes, that's correct.
Second.
That's your planning.
Just wanted to make sure you remember. Okay.
Thank you for that.
Wonderful, roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza? Nowakowski? Pastore? Stark? Waring? Gallego?
Yes. Item passes unanimously. Item 103, item 103 and 104 are related items. We have one card wishing to speak and two additional available to speak if necessary. It is in District Six, Councilman DeCecio.
I think they're both, they're all in favor, correct? I think Ms. Senders wants to speak about how favorable the process was, is that correct, Ms. Senders? Are you here? Or you want me to do it for you? You're welcome to come up and do it. And from my end, as she's going up there, I want to thank the neighborhood and the developer for working together. This has been a, what, a two-year process here on this property. It's time for something to happen, and the fact is that everybody worked together, everybody gave in a little bit, even though they didn't want to on some things. And this is an example of what it takes to get things done in the city of Phoenix, is when people cooperate. I think Jeff's here too, as the developer. There you are, you can raise your hand. So thank you for the work that you did on this, and in your group, the North Phoenix group, for involvement on this, but go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor Gallego, and council members, now, Sal just took all the words out of my mouth, but anyway, no, I think it's really important to point it out, and to reiterate what Councilman DeCecio has just said, because Carolyn Oberholzer and Jeff Jacobs have been so patient, and they've listened to the neighbors, and to me, this is what creates good development, when there's a collaboration like that, and we just would like to see that on every case, but that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for letting me come up.
Wonderful, thank you, and thank you for your leadership in the north-central neighborhood. So, Councilman, do we have a, and congratulations on a successful case.
Motion to approve. Do I need any unrelated?
And do you want to move, can we move 103 and 104 together?
I'd like to move both of them together, if that's okay, Mayor. I'd like to move 103 and 104, and I want to hear what Deborah Stark has to say, because she'll always-
I think it's probably with the ordinances at a company.
Yeah, it's motion to approve and adopt the related ordinance for both those items.
There you go.
I second that.
All right, since we kind of share that area.
Perfect.
Good collaboration.
Yeah.
Roll call.
And thanks for your help on that too, as well. I know you were involved in this case, and a couple others that are coming forward. Thanks for your help on that, Deb.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Nowakowski? Pastore?
Yes.
Stark? Waring? Gallego?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Oh, we have the-
All right. Councilwoman Stark, do you have a motion on 105?
Yes, so for 105, I know we have to hold a public hearing, but I would like to recommend approval of the item per the memo of the Planning Director dated April 2nd, 2019, and adopt the related resolution.
Wait a second?
Second.
Open the hearing, we have one card from the applicant's representative. Do you want to testify, given the motion? Do not see Mr. Earl.
The best thing I could do is sit down.
Excellent speech, one of the best. All right.
Glad you were able to get in as well.
Close the public hearing, roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza? Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastore? Stark? Waring? Gallego?
Yes, passes unanimously. Item 106.
Yes, I'd like to make a recommendation on this as well, and that would be to approve the item per the memo from the Planning Director, per the Planning Commission recommendation, and adopt the related ordinance with a modification to stipulation number five, to read that a minimum of fifteen percent of the gross project area shall be retained as open space as approved by the Planning and Development Department.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Earl, hearing the motion, we want to reprise your excellent speech. Excellent. Open the public hearing. Close the public hearing after Mr. Earl's excellent speech. Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza? Nowakowski? Pastore? Stark?
Yes.
Waring? Gallego?
Yes, item passes unanimously. Item 108.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion, we have a motion and a second. Marcus Pittman, marked opposed. Oh, I'm sorry. Please read the title.
Item 108, ordinance G6580, and ordinance amending Phoenix City Code, Chapter Two, Article Two, Rules of Council Proceedings, Rule 3B pertaining to the Order of Business for Formal Meetings, and Rule 8 pertaining to Citizen Comments.
Apology of church, and this rule that you guys are doing today, it should come to no surprise that you're removing the amendment, if I'm correct. You're removing that the citizen comments will be at the beginning and you're placing them to the end, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that what the-
Yes.
It should come as no surprise that my church, apology of church, has come here, and we have spoken against abortion for, since November or December, and the first day that the Planned Parenthood supporter, the one that Planned Parenthood endorsed, the mayor, has called quorum to silence us from speaking, apology of church, can you raise your hands? We are here to let you know that we will not deal with the way you treat women and babies in this city. We will not deal with it, and we're tired of it. And we reject this rule that's to silence us and to push us away, so that it makes it harder for people with jobs and with kids to come here and speak against the city council. It's a shame, and it's on purpose. It's on purpose, and you know it. You know it. And God is going to hold you accountable for it. It is no coincidence that this has happened today on Mayor Kate Gallegos's first term. And we have people from out of town here that are waiting to speak, and they haven't been able to, and we have children, and now you're trying to propose this so that it happens every single week. And it's not just apology of church that's affected by this, it's people who take time off of work to come when they can, to just give you a moment, and you're making them have to sit through an entire meeting before they're able to do it during the middle of the day. And it's tyranny, and God will hold you accountable to that. And we're here, and we're still going to be speaking no matter what time you move it to.
Thank you, any council member comments?
Mayor, I'd like to respond to, one, I'm pro-life, so I'm very sympathetic, but this is an administrative move, and the reason why it's being done is that there are other individuals that have been trying to get in, and they, this has been going on every week. We have other individuals that have business that they have to attend to, they have to be here in that meeting, that single meeting, and that they had to wait on these public comments. It's a, whether it's at the beginning or the end, it doesn't happen but much more than an hour. I mean, if you know it's going to be within an hour, just come a little later. So, at the end of the day, it's more of, it's not more, it is an administrative move. I don't believe that this is anything that was contrived at all, because we've all talked about it at some time or another, of moving the public comment where it's continuous. The way it was in the past is you'd have a little bit at the front, a little bit at the end, who knows who got selected, who didn't get selected. So now, everything's done continuously, and it's done more orderly. I'm going to be supportive of this motion for that reason. Again, I consider myself to be pro-life, a strong supporter of that, of the movement, and I understand what's going on, and I do see this as a situation where we have individuals that need to be here on a daily basis, not a daily basis, but come in here to do and conduct that business, and it's done quickly, and it's been able to move on. So that way, whatever the messaging is at the end, it is that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. This will bring us in line with most of the cities in Arizona. Any further comments? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastore? Stark? Waring? Gallego?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. We now move to citizen comments. Dr. James White.
Good afternoon, my name is James White. I am a minister, a author, and a professor. In April of 1945, American forces were moving into the heart of Germany, and they freed a city called Weimar. It's a beautiful little city. Right up on the hill outside of Weimar was a very large camp. We know it today as the Buchenwald Concentration Camp. What they found there has become the stuff of legend. It wasn't as large as Auschwitz, it wasn't as large as Dachau, but, for example, the camp superintendent's wife, she was fascinated by human skin. She had a lampshade made out of human skin. She was fascinated by tattoos, so she would have people killed and have their tattoos preserved. The kind of horrific things that took place in Buchenwald over years so shocked the American leadership that when Dwight D. Eisenhower and General Patton toured the camp, General Patton commanded that the mayor and magistrates and leading citizens of Weimar be forced to tour the camp to see what had been done right under their eyes for many years. Now, most of us would say that that was a moral act on the part of the Americans. The question that I have is, history looks very much askance at the citizens of Weimar. They did nothing. They said, "Verhaben nicht gewusst, we didn't know!" How could they not know what was going on within plain view up there on the hill? They knew, but they kept their eyes down. They didn't want to see, and so history has treated them very, very poorly. The question I have for us today is, how will history treat us? Because the reality is, within the borders of the city of Phoenix, more innocent children have been killed in equally gruesome ways than were ever killed in the Buchenwald Concentration Camp in the entire years that it was in operation. How will history look at us? Will there be a General Patton that has to rise from the dead and force us to walk through the abortuaries? But, I don't think history is the most important thing. How will the judge of all history look upon us when we stand before him? He knows whether we knew or not, and we live in a day where there's no reason not to know what's going on, not to know the humanity of the preborn child. Will he look upon the donations that we received from Planned Parenthood? Will he see those things? I ask you, please, make the city of Phoenix a sanctuary city for preborn children. Save us from the infamy and the cowardice of Weimar. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rusty Thomas.
Thou shall not murder. This commandment is binding upon all men at all times and in every nation. God did not say thou shall not murder unless the Supreme Court rules otherwise. The Supreme Court is not the supreme being. Divine law trumps human law, and every human law that violates God's law is no law at all, so says eighteen hundred years of recorded history in Western civilization. Next quote, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Our nations sin when we deny the right of liberty to our black brethren. Our Lord warned this nation for seventy-five years, "Let them go." We hardened our heart, and we stiffened our neck, and it took a bloody civil war to end the scourge of slavery in the United States of America. Abraham Lincoln pinpointed the cause, pay attention to his words, "Until every drop of blood drawn from the lash shall be paid by every drop of blood drawn from the sword, as it was said three thousand years ago and still remains today, the judgments of the Lord are true and righteous altogether." Well, that was then, and this is now. At least, most of the slaves were still- At least, most of the slaves were still allowed to live. But now, our nation has crushed over sixty million children made in the image of God. We have torn their limbs from their torsos. We have decapitated their heads. We have poisoned them, and we have shed volumes and volumes of innocent blood. Can we possibly conceive the wrath that is pent up against this nation? And know this for a certainty, all the blood that has been shed, this nation will be held to account for every single drop. Next quote. "No person shall be deprived of life without due process of law." Let me ask a rhetorical question. What has the preborn done? What capital crime have they committed that they deserve capital punishment? Whatever happened, is my time up here? Can I finish my statement, please? Whatever happened to equal justice under the law? Each of us here will welcome into life, and we're protected by law. How can you and I partake of these gifts and deny it to our own sons and daughters?
Jeff Durbin?
Is that it?
That is.
Then just say one last thing. I would just call upon you to fear God. Stop carrying the sword of justice in vain. Do your duty. Ignore Roe. Establish justice and end abortion now in the city of Phoenix, in Jesus's name. Thank you.
Jeff Durbin?
Thank you. Honorable representatives, my name is Pastor Jeff Durbin. I'm the head of End Abortion Now. We're coming once again to remind you in our community of the modern-day Holocaust that is occurring all around us. Defenseless human beings are being dismembered, chemically burned, disemboweled, and decapitated in your city under your watch and jurisdiction. These murders are occurring regardless of the fundamental law of God against the unjustified killing of human beings, thou shall not kill, regardless of the unchanged Arizona law against abortion, AZ Statute 13-3603, still on the books, and regardless of the fact that courts cannot create law according to our Constitution. A man took an oath to that earlier today. Roe v. Wade is not a law. It's an ignorant, unscientific, and fallacious court opinion from the 1970s created by a group of ignorant white men. With respect, honorable representatives, does that help in our modern culture? If we frame the need for justice for these fatherless children in the words of our modern social justice warriors, will you act and begin upholding righteousness and protecting these image bearers of God? Let's try it. Long ago, in a patriarchal society, a group of white cisgender males delivered an ignorant and unscientific court opinion that allowed people to target a group of oppressed identities in the womb. Some of these human beings were potentially lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgendered. This discrimination was based on social power, prejudice, and privilege aimed at promoting ageism. It was an example of collusion that happened not long after many whites didn't like drinking water with or sitting near black people on buses. Will this catch our attention now, or should we simply recognize that the murder of innocent, defenseless human beings is a moral atrocity that should never be accepted? We've experienced a sort of dehumanization before, friends, and because it is behind us with our heroes that stood against it, we look back in horror with squinty eyes and stomachs turning. Not very long ago, it wasn't small and defenseless human beings in the safe sanctuary of their mommies, it was people with black skin. They'd say, "Don't worry, it only looks like a human. It's not a real human, it's a black man." They'd say, "Don't fret, that's not a human being, that's a Jew." Countless scarred backs and pounds and pounds of gas testify to this wickedness. May I humbly suggest something? We're engaging in the highest form of hypocrisy and pretending if we puff our chests and look down our noses at slave traders and German soldiers, and we sit quietly and impotent while children are slaughtered in the wombs of their mommies. These are image bearers of God. These are irrefutably human beings from the very moment of conception according to all modern biological science, but they're not fully developed. They don't look like me. They're getting in the way of what I want. Ladies and gentlemen, if we accept this wicked form of fallacious reasoning, we may as well be honest with ourselves, put a sign over it, and stand opposed. I call upon you to turn to God to wield the sword of justice with righteousness, be impartial, and stop the slaughter of human beings in the womb. Turn to Christ and live.
Thank you, Zach Conover.
Councilman DeCecio, if you're serious, prove it. Help us end it, in this state and in this city. Good afternoon, Phoenix council members. My name is Zachary Conover, and I return once again today in order to bring to your attention the plight of the most oppressed people group in our state. They're the ones being victimized in our communities. They're the ones who are having violations done to them apart from giving their consent. They're the ones having their bodily autonomy disregarded as they continue to be subjected to daily acts of terror, denied their most basic human rights. They remain defenseless against the hands that would seek to label them as undocumented and remove them from the refuge of their parents. The victimized group I speak of are the unborn children that are systematically murdered by abortion day by day in our cities, and who are the culprits responsible for ensuring the lack of equality for these victims of such hate crime? Murderous entities like Planned Parenthood, of course. They're a malicious organization founded on the destruction of minorities, and in the case of our state, that successful business strategy continues as nearly half of these contract killings are performed on the Hispanic and Latino community in our state. This is a strong indication that words like genocide are alive and well, unlike the babies being discriminated against on the basis of race and sex by this unjust entity. It ought to forcefully strike anyone paying attention that an organization who claims to uphold women's rights while murdering hundreds of thousands of little women in the womb every year is guilty of hypocrisy in the worst way. Planned Parenthood hates women, but not as much as they hate the children that they carry. Women are a dollar sign to them, an exchangeable commodity, devalued and objectified the same as the prey of a rapist. Over the past several years, I have watched weekly as women after women welcome others into Planned Parenthood and its advocates. I have interacted with myself, many of whom have murdered their own children by abortion, and they welcome others to do the same. They're rebelling against their own biology and against the God who made them, and it's my contention that Planned Parenthood advocates are self-deceived and in desperate need of their forgiveness that only Jesus Christ can offer for the malice that they've shown not only to their own children, but the countless others that they lead to death every week. Anyone, and I do mean anyone, Mayor Gallego, that partners with them also needs to repent of their ways, which is why I come before you, the mayor and the council of this city, as a Christian by the authority of the Lord, to tell you that you must make Phoenix a sanctuary city for these children. You can act, you can do something to zone businesses and hospitals so that abortion becomes illegal surgically and chemically, whether it's Planned Parenthood, hospital, pharmacy, or you can create a new zone that includes the entire city and bans it outright, but please protect these children and push entities like Planned Parenthood out of our city once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stark, did you have a clarification on a previous agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, just before we lose, I don't want us to lose a quorum, but in the motion we made on 105, the notes I was given, there was mention of a memo, but that memo is not to be attached. It should say that, for the record, we approve it for the planning commission and adopt the related resolution. So I don't know, is the clarification okay, Chris? Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure we had it on the record. I don't know how to read.
Perfect, so that appropriately... We have corrected that for the record. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Stark. Yes, superstar planner. Nathan Hitzinger.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego, honorable counselors. Thank you for your time. My name is Nathan Hitzinger, and I'm a thirty-four-year-old ball of cells, product of conception and clump of tissue. I'm a disciple of Jesus Christ and a native Phoenician. Christ tells us that the most important commandment is to love the Lord your God with all your heart, your soul, and your mind. The second, which follows from the first, is to love your neighbor as yourself. I'm here today to plead with you for the lives of our preborn neighbors as a fellow image bearer of the God that you all know in your heart. By my count, there are four operating abortuaries in the Phoenix proper, each with conveniently dressed-up names. You can look them and their doctors up one by one and find plenty of newsworthy controversy. And while that's terrible, remember that the only significant difference between Kermit Gosnell's slaughterhouse and the death mill down the street is a hopefully sterile environment. Their trophy crime is the same, the slaughter of innocents in broad daylight, masquerading as women's rights, as empowerment, or as my personal favorite, bodily autonomy. Make no mistake, these are crimes by any definition, God's law via the Bible and civil law via Arizona Vice Statute 13-3603, and yet we do nothing except for make more laws that say it's okay to slaughter a child so long as certain specific conditions are met. Look, I know you're tired of hearing about this, I'm the fifth speaker on the same topic at the end of a meeting. You should know that while I admire what they do, I'm not affiliated with apology of church or with End Abortion Now. I'm simply a very concerned Phoenician with three minutes to beg you, my local government, to be at the forefront of ending this Holocaust. And I suppose right now you're thinking one of two things. You either buy into this "my body, my choice to snuff out an innocent life" thing, or you're thinking, "I'm a city official, I have no business regulating abortion," which is great, because we don't want you to regulate it, we want you to end it. We want current Arizona law enforced. It doesn't seem like a lot to ask. I would respectfully and lovingly submit to you that you do not understand the severity of this issue or the consequences of a failure to act. I would remind you that you've been placed in this role of authority by none other than the providence of God the Father in the fifth-largest city in the country. And I also think it's an act of God's providence that the chaplain brought up Romans 13 in his invocation, because Romans 13:4 also tells us that as the ruling authority, you are to be avengers who bring wrath on the ones who practice evil. And I have a special message for those men in positions of authority. 1 Corinthians 16:13 tells us to act like men and be strong. It means, among other things, defend the defenseless, protect the weak. "Men, with all the love in my heart, stand up and be men. A boy stands by while the innocent are slaughtered; a man puts an end to it." Please act to stop this modern-day worshiping of molek, this modern-day child sacrifice. I love you all, may God be with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joanne Scott Woods.
Okay. Good afternoon, council and mayor, and congratulations from my son and I on your election win, which is a win for our city as well. It is more difficult than usual when I was driving here today, because I felt the sorrow for the loss, I'm sorry, for the family and to our city of Officer Paul Rutherford. I have two citizen petitions today, one that honors lives lost and one that protects living. The first request, in addition to the Phoenix Police Department Critical Incident Transparency Protocol, a dedication statement to those in our city who have lost their lives or been seriously injured. The second request, law enforcement transparency through body-worn camera footage of officer articulation of ten citizen rights during arrest process. Training in the articulation of these can prevent unlawful arrest and imprisonment of a citizen, protect the careers of officers, and prevent a multi-million-dollar expense of successful claims and civil lawsuits against our city. Thank you for continuing to protect citizens and officers and developing new procedures and ordinances that ensure dignity for all. And I have copies, they're paired.
Thank you. Elizabeth Venable.
Elizabeth Venable, 1950 East Cortez Street, Phoenix, Arizona 85020. Born and raised. Yesterday, no, two days ago, the ruling Martin v. Boise from September 2018 was reaffirmed by the courts, saying that it's cruel and unusual punishment to criminalize sleeping and camping. Based on that ruling, it is appropriate that the city consider well and how the homeless may camp in accordance with the Constitution. Please clarify this for the homeless. Under the ruling, the only way you can move someone by law enforcement when they are illegally sleeping or camping is to offer them shelter. This is currently not occurring. Even under Phoenix CARES, you are only offering mental health and substance abuse treatment. This is not appropriate for many people who simply need shelter as a gateway to services. And that should probably be the order in which it goes, shelter as a gateway to services. If you, you are still trying to arrest or use diversion programs to address this issue. In addition, please instruct your officers to desist from seizing and destroying the property of homeless individuals. This is also unconstitutional, and there is litigation on this as well. Please respect the basic civil rights of people experiencing homelessness in Phoenix. Please clarify the law, desist enforcing trespassing law for illegal sleeping and camping, as well as destruction of personal property by the police. We are asking for this to be done through municipal policy.
Thank you. Mark Cordova.
Hi there, my name is Mark Cordova. Glad to see you guys. Yes, I'm one of the homeless persons out there seeking shelter and seeking employment, seeking education on how to stay sober and live the right way, but we do need a place to stay, and we hope that you guys will consider changing, you know, something for us and making our lives a little better for us and for you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey Moore.
Good afternoon, distinguished members of the council. My name is Casey Moore, and I live in District 7. I'm here today to discuss some concerning issues with Neighborhood Services and that department's utter lack of adherence to the provisions of the city of Phoenix municipal codes, their own written enforcement policies, and now a judge's ruling in a court order. For background, I was issued a civil citation for a code violation some two months after making an appeal allowable in the city code. I called and made that appeal and requested clarification within ninety minutes of a door hanger being left. That call, as well as six other recorded voicemails, I've left for the city on this matter, all impressively or intentionally went unreturned. I do have all of these calls recorded. The case then proceeded to court, and the court ruled in my favor, finding me not guilty and/or responsible. With more time than is allowed here, I would welcome the opportunity to show the seemingly systematic refusal of Neighborhood Services to follow the most basic provisions of the city code, its own written enforcement policy, and now a judge's ruling in court order. This monumental waste of taxpayers' funds to ignore provisions in the code and by default to engage the most expensive of the city employees, who are the city attorneys and judges. I can say this because at my wasteful trial on this matter, after the city's refusal to acknowledge my voicemails, my valid appeal, and request for an administrative hearing, which are all allowable under the city code, the agent, while under oath, may have revealed the true workings of this department. While discussing the notice of violation and under oath, the city agent was asked, "What is the process for a resident to appeal these fines?" "What is the process for a resident to appeal these findings?" Her answer was, "We usually take them to court." The judge, seemingly shocked by that answer, attempted to clarify with her own question. "Isn't there a way to appeal a notice of violation?" Her answer, while under oath, "Not that I'm aware of." I think the city council and the residents of this great city should be concerned with this type of operations within the city of Phoenix. Ignoring court orders, not following its own enforcement policies, not knowing the intricacies of city code they are empowered to enforce. These things that they're empowered to enforce have first-time penalties of up to $2,500. The reason I'm here today, days after my court hearing, I applied to refinance my home mortgage. That refinance was turned down on a single point of fact, that open code compliance case. Interest rates have now raised. By my calculations, this willful disregard of a court order will cost me $22,000 over the next 30 years. It's shameful, and it needs to stop.
Thank you. And we do have some city employees who are here who may be able to follow up. Thank you. Our final citizen comment is from Leonard Clark.
Thank you, mayor and council members. I'm just here to, first of all, thank you and thank the employees of the city of Phoenix. But I do have to bring up a concern. As you might or might not know, I do have several political action committees. And yes, I've messed up, and I'm going to be paying some tax dollars, I'm going to be helping the city of Phoenix here. But what I'm concerned about is, first of all, complimenting the hard-working people, the city clerk, and the clerk's employees. We seem to have an antiquated system. I go down to Arizona Secretary of State and file my political action committees, whether on the phone, my own phone, iPhone, or at the computer, and I have no problems. I can't do it on my phone. On my phone, and it seems to be a problem with others. Today, I went there, the computers weren't working. Today, I have to file before the deadline, it's $25 a day. And they were very nice and said, "Mr. Clark, you know, we now know it's not your fault, the computers aren't working today." But, you know, this is the fifth-largest city in the United States of America, and when citizens go in and they want to file a political action committee and not have to pay $25 a day because I don't have access right now to a computer, then I just think that it needs to be updated. And also, I don't know if we have a current list of registered lobbyists with the city, but I do think that everybody who's a registered lobbyist with the city of Phoenix, there should be somewhere for people to go on the website. Now, that might already be in effect. I don't think the Secretary of State has one, although that's not the current person who just came into office who's doing a great job, by the way. That's not their fault. Also, I wanted to speak on the homeless situation. There's been occurrences now where people have been getting violently attacked. Because, as you know, not due to your fault, the funding for mental health treatment is not being supplied by the leadership in the Arizona State Legislature. So we have many people on the street who should be taken care of, getting therapy, psychology, and now we have attacks. One lady claimed she was attacked over by this veterinarian clinic in the city of Phoenix. This story was just updated three hours ago. Today, on National Public Radio, they're talking about an uptick in typhus, all kinds of medieval diseases, because these homeless encampments, basically, just quite simply, feces and all these things are out there. We need to do something. And I do side with Councilman Noakowski. For a long time, he has said that, "Why aren't the other cities stepping up? Why is it that the city of Phoenix, and we love our homeless people, we're trying to do our best, but why are the other cities not helping? It's growing worse." And it's not the homeless people's fault. I know it's not your fault, but we need to do something. And I'm hoping you will check into that. And then one last thing. My condolences. As you know, I believe there's legislation going through for missing indigenous ladies and women, but any of our sisters, they just found, apparently, the remains of a lady, God rest her soul, up in North Phoenix, who's been missing since 2017. She disappeared around St. Joseph's Hospital. So our sisters are disappearing, and we need to treat them with respect and dignity. Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.